I'd like to welcome me to the city council meeting for November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. And I'm mayor of four. I'd like to call this meeting board. Finance director. It's their role call, please.
Yeah, we have Ellis.
Yes.
Francie.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Hotchkin.
Here.
Hubbard.
Here.
Lawrence.
Here.
Mackey. Morrison. Parachini.
Here.
Credo.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
And Merrill.
Here.
Mr. Jim. We're not supposed to excuse them from answering the questions.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All favor.
Fine.
I would really stand for the rope, uh, but if I do please.
I want to tell you guys, we live in the United States of America and to the Republic where we should stand. One nation, under God, in a vessel with the liberty of just this one.
Thank you. Uh, the president's.
Second.
Is there any discussions? All favor.
Aye.
Repose. If we are moving up to public comment, uh, please start off with your names and your board. For your nearby nearby address and behind it, you got three minutes. So all rush at once. Hi.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Deborah Herring and I am one of Walmart's. And I am the director of state and local government affairs, so I'm just gonna be from the store. And not awards since I'm not a city of Aberdeen resident. But I just wanted to, uh, be here tonight, uh, in support of, uh, an item that is on the later part of your agenda. Um, you'll be hearing a presentation from Public Works about the um, Highway twelve rail separation flyover project. And on behalf of Walmart, really just wanted to take a few minutes to say thank you. And to appreciate the city of Aberdeen staff, the Highway twelve rail separation project staff. And to recognize the amount of hours and work that it took, um, over many years to get to the point where you are tonight. Uh, we, uh, participated in a number of conversations and worked very diligently with the team and they've just been, um, just wonderful work with, uh, listening to concerns and were able to make some changes that, um, I think got us to where we are today. So, thank you. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Deborah, who's behind me. Um, thank you to the Port of Graves Harbor as well. Um, and to Ruth especially, and to all of you on the city council. So, just uh, providing our appreciation for the hard work that that's taken place over such a long period of time.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other public comments?
I, I'm definitely. Uh, I just wanted to let everybody know in case you didn't that, uh, at the Braves Harbor Democrats meeting, they decided to give four of the high school food balls, uh, each five hundred dollars. So total of two thousand dollars will be going towards that for, uh, food assistance for everybody. So I wanted to thank them.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ralph Obuhu, Ward four. Still the best ward out of all the wards. I know it's not a competition, but we are. I came here in, gosh, I think, uh, month before October, talking about a cleanup, uh, over in October on Franklin and Fifth Street. Uh, DJ from City Public Works, I think, uh, gave us some garbage bags and went really well. We liked it so much, uh, we're gonna do another one on the day after Thanksgiving, uh, over by the entrance to Morrison Riverfront Park. So, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, hanging out, getting filthy and picking up some garbage. Uh, second thing, I, I hope this is the appropriate place for the comments on the ADA. I did send in an email, but, um, I was sort of late to the game. I saw the notification about the ADA plan. And I read it because I'm a huge dork. It's fifty-eight pages. It's really good. Uh, as somebody who's a total outsider to what the engineering department does or what the city does, to go through and see the intentionality and the care that went into that and the, the amount of information that was made, uh, public and the public engagement that happened, all of the appendices, uh, really, really cool to see. And again, as an outsider, if you're looking for public comment, I just have a lot of confidence that it's being handled really, really well. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
You know, I got another. I'm, I'm Steve Mulood. I, I live in Aberdeen. And I got a recycle bill just a couple of days ago. I went to, uh, they, um, well, the garbage company just, just out of town here, it's barely out of town, and talked to them about this bill. And they said that, uh, the taxes were four point five percent at the first year. And, and they said that you talked to them a little bit, but did not say whether they had it or not. And they kind of dropped the ball. Somebody did. Anyway, it was dropped all year long. And now all of a sudden, somebody wakes up and say, hey, I want that money now. Uh, not, uh, you know, so if everybody's gotta pay a bigger bill, to me, that's not right. You, you people should have done better on the way you put this in. If you wanted nine point four first year, you should have started it the first year and not wait till the last month of the year and say, hey, I gotta have that money now. Everybody has to pay almost an extra twenty dollars a month for this, this one time shot, but still, that's a lot when you figure out everybody in Central Park and here have to pay that. That's not right. And somebody needs to own up to this and make sure it doesn't happen again, because it is uncalled for. And it hurts our seniors, you know, especially that's what I am. And I don't have that extra money, but I, I gotta come up with it now. You know, because you requested it. I got the bill right, right here to prove it, but anyway, uh, there, there was one other thing that, uh, Lee May said to me. I said, well, what if I wanna just skip one, one pickup, you know, I, I have two a month. He said, well, we could, but you still be charged for it. I said, that's not right. Why should I get charged for something when I'm not delivering to you? And then not only on top of that, I'll be taxed by Aberdeen too, the whole month. For, for what? If I decided to do that, but I'm not gonna do that, but I'm just saying. The options should be there if I wanted to do that. But just one of those things, you know, to catch twenty-two, I guess you call it. But it needs to be thought up, thought about too. But I'm just not happy with this return here. So, and, and next year you're gonna be paying nine point four percent for the whole year. Well, that's fine. You're already getting the money for the whole year anyway. But let's do it the right way and not do it the way you guys did it. Anyway, I asked them who, who the fault was and they put the finger to you. So you just, uh, I don't know who's, who's playing the blame game here, but it, it come out wrong.
Yeah, we probably, we'll talk to you after. Oh, they have you signed up with their senior rate?
Well, you gotta call ahead.
You have me signed up with their senior rate? At all?
Well, anyway, that's, that's about what I had, hadn't said, and then I didn't want to miss this meeting. When I found out there was one in the.
Sir, are you signed up for the senior rate through LeMay's?
They have, they have a senior rate for discount first.
Well, yeah, yeah, I could, I could do that too, but, but the situation is what happened here shouldn't have never happened. Not, not like this. Now, now I gotta go the whole year and say, hey, I want the money now. So you gotta bill everybody and, and they, they told me out there, they may. They said that, uh, they would not raise my bill this, this high. It was up to them. But that's just the way it works, you know? When you get to the bottom line, you need the money by the end of the year. Don't have any other option. You, you, you take it, you know, but I'm just saying that that's not the way to do it. And you have to hold here to figure this out. It seems like all you people could figure this thing out without doing this, this way. And there's a lot of people in my area felt the same way I did, but, but he didn't come in, but anyway, you, you know about it now, but, and I, I apologize for giving low. I don't.
You can take your time.
But, yeah. I'm, anyway, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Anybody else with, with public comments? All right, we'll move on then, um, to our consent agenda with, uh, council president Swart.
Motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the October twenty-ninth meeting and council table and things.
Okay. Who can say? Is there any discussion? Any, uh, all favor?
Aye.
Propose? Okay. That it can. Okay. Uh, so for the mayor's report, I just had a couple of long, long letters to read, but they're not here down line. Um, first off, um, yesterday was Veterans Day and I just wanted to acknowledge, um, the men, women who served our country and, and, uh, we're all grateful for your efforts. If any of you are veterans, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Uh, also their families. I, I kind of got this idea from, uh, Walmart's, you know, she sent a letter and said, it's all part of it. Uh, okay, then the next letter was from the Washington Museum Association. Says Mayor Orr and Council, we are writing to share deep appreciation for the remarkable work of History ninety-five-two-oh, a dedicated group of community members who care for and preserve Aberdeen's museum, Aberdeen's museum collections with exceptional passion, skill, and heart. Your city is truly fortunate to have such a committed organization stewarding its history and keeping its stories alive for future generations. Over the past year, the Washington Museum Association has had the privilege of working closely with History ninety-five-two-oh through our volunteer museum, learning community, a program made possible through, uh, some grants. And then it goes, uh, for more than twenty applicants across the, uh, this state. History ninety-five-two-oh was selected for its outstanding dedication to preserving Aberdeen's history. The dedication has been especially evident in the years following in our devastating two thousand eighteen fire. With, uh, while such a loss might have ended many small, all volunteer organizations, History ninety-five-two-oh chose to be active in rebuilding their resilience as a true testament to the power of the community and shared purpose in preserving Aberdeen's story. The volunteers of History ninety-five-two-oh amplify, exemplify what is, what it means for a museum to serve its community, to give their time, expertise, and energy to ensure that the city's history remains accessible, meaningful, and well-cared-for. Their work provides an invaluable public service fund that enriches, educates, supports tourism, and strengthens, strengthens, strengthens the culture and economic fabric of Aberdeen. You know, so I just wanted to thank them for that. And then I got one other letter here from Aberdeen City Council. We want to thank you for reinstating our recreational money for twenty twenty-five for over thirty years. It's been so good to have that each year for the seniors to go on trips. This year we did a Mariners game in the summer. Recently, we took a trip up to the sound taking in a woodcarver, a, a ride on the ferry and the dollar box to see fish in the ladders. Both trips were fun. It would not have happened without the recreational money. Thank you again for your support, Aberdeen Senior Center and Executive Board. That's it for mine. All right, now, do we have any council reports? Council president Allison.
Thank you. Um, almost every Saturday, there's a group of people who volunteer their time at the seaport to restore two longboats. The Captain Peaslee and the Hugh of Jackson. These are replicas of the longboats that were aboard the Lady Washington, which we, um, discovered in Graves Harbor. And, um, and it's just been a joy to see the craftsmanship and how they have transformed a vessel with a lot of rot into a solid boat that just looks amazing. And the, um, the Captain Peaslee has been restored and they take her out every on then and do a run between Aberdeen or Oakham and Westport. And to have that, and, and the public is welcome. To have the ability to connect with the water, connect with our history, um, and connect with these knowledgeable people is just really uh, an opportunity that I'd like to encourage people to take advantage of. Um, the Lady Washington is in Port, in Port Townsend, being restored. And, um, the seaport needs about two hundred thousand dollars, I think, to, um, see that to a, to a finish. And I would encourage us as your home board that we look for ways to support that effort um, and help bring the lady home, perhaps in time for the, uh, the centennial celebrations to come next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council reports? Councilperson Francie.
I, I helped them grow the HR action across the river years back. Um, but, uh, last Saturday, I went and cleaned up the canvas roads and only found a bag of garbage from that area. But it's, it's great, uh, I'm just. But I guess.
Thank you. I really appreciate that because you're working hard to keep our city clean. Any other council reports? Okay, staff reports. Administrative plans.
Thank you, mayor. Um, before you, you have a proposal that, um, I drafted up. Um, on the creation of a program called Aberdeen One-on-One and Guide to Your City. Um, this is an introductory course to citizens and residents, uh, or excuse me, residents, um, to their local government and kind of a great way to engage our community. Um, so there's a lot of detail that I put in here and I want your feedback on that. If you want to email me or if you want to see something else added to it, or I'd be happy to step in further review. But this is something that I would like to launch in February. And what it is is basically a three, eight week course, um, on how the city operates, on the ins and outs of the city. Um, ideally, it's to just kind of, the council has a goal, more civic engagement, but you also have this goal of more communication with the community. And so this would fit into that goal. Um, but then it would also develop like future leaders and volunteers in the city, get people more engaged. So this is just, uh, something that is kind of a standard in a lot of cities that I'd like to see here and we're trying to make our, um, you know, just trying to increase engagement in our city. So it breaks it down week by week. I think that there is a place in here for the council to be involved. Um, in week seven, ideally, that's when we would probably be more, um, publicly and maybe think about that, just to kind of get people in there. So just any idea of anything that you would like to say right now. It's about eight weeks. I considered using the same model that we did with the utility rate advisory committee, not like that one every month, but I feel like people would business allow, so just kind of hitting it, you know, every week, I think that'd be ideal. Um, but again, we would limit it, or excuse me, we would limit it to twenty participants. It would be every Thursday. So again, open to any ideas or additions or changes that you would like to see reflected in this. Um, that goes to you as well. And so are there any questions?
Uh, it's limited within twenty. I'd like to know, just see, I'd like to test like kind of different tool on the wire with this, if we're gonna do it. Get a list of participants, people interested in it, but willing to show up for any person knows. It's a great idea, but it has to come at a cost to the city. It would be, I mean, there, there has to be a price to existence. There's documents or time. I mean, if this is end up being a kind of our project and four people show up and assumes eight weeks of to our bits of cities are really cost effective to host a private tour of the cities or two or three people.
Yeah, I've, um, I've, um, read about, uh, other cities who have this same program. And they're all very successful. It ends up being an incubator for future council members to come from, where people are engaged in the city and really want to find out more about how it runs and they, they're, well, all the cities I've spoken to have been very successful.
And is it usually free? I mean, I assume even if it was a twenty dollar fee, people would be more inclined to actually show up.
I don't, you know, this was something that I modeled after Chief Green and their Citizens Academy and they have that. But so this is something I maybe figured we could do like in tandem with theirs. So, but I don't, I don't know. I guess we could just try it. Really, the only.
The only.
Right. The only costs that I really see, um, associated with this are binders and paper, um, and then staff time.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know of any staff that I would be, there won't be any staff that have like overtime associated with them or anything like that. So, um, I also wanted to reach out to like the PUD and the Corps to see if we could use their spaces. I wanted to try and use every available space that could have like post twenty people, just so that people can get kind of an idea of how vast their city actually is.
Yeah, most of the speakers, she, most of the speakers she has, the lineup are not from the city, they're from other organizations that, that would be volunteering their time also.
That was a good kind of, you know, double check. Because I know when you start running, you want to come speak, but it'd be four or five seconds off.
Oh, no, I, we're doing.
Okay, okay. I appreciate it. Free, yeah, we still, my, my, I always start to wonder, okay, it says free there, but free, free.
I, I will be mindful of that and track the costs associated with it, but it really, hopefully they're, they're just a very minimal, yeah.
I think it's a, a great idea. I'm, um, I'm also thinking that eight weeks is a long commitment. And perhaps I'll let a, like a three or four hour overview. And, and you said as a sounding board for, are there people who come to that who would be willing to commit to something longer? Or is the interest really in short, little bites, um, that are maybe more that fit more with people's schedules?
Um, Lieutenant Cox, have you, have you guys have any issues with people showing up to your Citizens Academy or people committing weekly to it? I believe, um, Councilmember Parachini was also a part of that, so we'd love your feedback on that.
Yeah, no, people were committed to it to stay here. Attend all, all the sessions.
And then. Do you have any feedback on your time with the Citizens Academy?
I thought it was a great learning experience and more people wanted to enter than put.
Okay.
So I think that this was pretty excellent. And, you know, I wish we'd done this years ago. I think it's a great idea.
That was a big experience, not being, you know.
No, because people are going to our city, so they want to learn, they want to know more about the city. I refer me and listen to the police of God, you know. I, even though I know about the city, I, I would love to take this. I think it would be great.
Excellent.
Yeah. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Any other directors with reports? Yep. Okay, then let's move on to presentations. Tonight we have the ADA transition plan and Monica Zelman's gonna be our, our speaker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
And can you see my slide deck? I can't hear if anyone can hear me or not.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Wonderful. Uh, thank you. Good evening. Um, I'll be presenting on the draft version of the city's ADA transition plan for the public right of way. The project team for this endeavor is a combination of city staff and consultant staff. Uh, Gabby and Nick from the city's public works department have been working with myself and Victor Salman. Um, I'm a planner with Transportation Solutions. We're based in Woodenville, Washington. And Victor is the engineer for this project. In this presentation, I intend to review the ADA transition plan that we've developed for the public right of way. And also our ask of you is that you would support this plan, the final version for adoption by your council in December. Any DA transition plan must do four things. First, it needs to identify barriers that make it hard for people with disabilities to use Aberdeen's public right of way, and that's the roads and streets and the pedestrian infrastructure in your city. The second thing the plan must do is figure out how to fix those barriers and how much it costs to fix them. So what methods will we use? Will we, um, do sidewalk, um, leveling? Or will we replace a complete ramp? Or will we add a pedestrian APS push button? So how we're gonna do it and what it costs. And last, the fourth item, or third rather, is to decide when to fix the barriers and have a schedule. And fourth is to pick a person in the city leadership pool and make sure barriers are fixed each year of the schedule. Under Title Two of the ADA, barriers are identified that local and state governments are responsible to remove barriers at. And so we have physical barriers and programmatic barriers. In this plan, we address all the physical barriers in the public right of way. And we also look at required policies and procedures in the programmatic side. There are still some items the city has left due for barriers in other facilities. So buildings and parks, that would be a future city task. And also a more comprehensive look at the services, programs, and activities of the city. So, for instance, eligibility for activities that you would require. Um, you could have ID and not just a driver's license required for ID, because a driver's license may not be something that a person with a disability has. So there's some other act, other future tax, tasks related to accessibility. But this plan covers a giant component with the phys, the public right of way. For the policies, personnel, and procedures, there are two roles that this plan spit, uh, calls out. The ADA five oh four coordinator, this is a required role, and at the city, the. And at the city, the human resources director fills that role. And this person will field grievance requests or other concerns from the public regarding uh, discrimination based on uh, disability or other accessibility requests or concerns. And as previously mentioned, the official responsible to implement this plan and to work towards bear removal is the public works director, since this is a public right of way focused plan. The plan also includes the public ADA notice. This is a commitment that the city will, uh, the city's committed to not discriminating based on disability and that it will provide effective communication. Another policy is the accessible pedestrian signal policy, APS for short. APS is at signalized intersections. It's the button and the pedestrian head with the countdown and audible features. So that people with disabilities can cross uh, streets. And so there's a policy to help the city guide uh, when improvements need to be made. And what type of APS needs to be installed and curb ramps related to uh, APS. And then last, the ADA grievance procedure. This is required so that people can submit a concern if they feel they've been discriminated against. Um, the city has other methods, the citizen action request, that's a less negative perceived uh, tool. But the grievance procedure, um, you're required by law as a, as a municipality to have an ADA grievance procedure. So we have that for you. We covered quite a bit of ground for evaluating public right of way facilities. We looked at curb ramps, sidewalks, driveways. That's very important because a cross slope in a driveway can be a hazard for someone using a mobility device. We looked to get at pedestrian crossings, those accessible pedestrian signals at intersections the city is responsible for. As well as the flashing beacon crossings, RFBs, uh, one on Heron Street and one at the entrance for Grace Harbor College. Lastly, we looked at paved paths as well. We wanted to cover the network of pedestrian facilities. And we thought that those paved paths for recreation were important to include. With our self evaluation efforts, we used a few methods. We looked at Google Street View, we did fieldwork. Um, and we also did fieldwork based on sampling. Given the amount of sidewalk and driveway infrastructure the city had, we um, we did a sampling method uh, that we believe is accurate. And so that more detail about that method's in the plan. Um, but I did go out in the field um, quite a bit. I've walked quite a lot of your streets now and gotten to know Aberdeen much better. And so when we look at the total inventory, you'll see you have over two thousand curb ramps, almost twenty five hundred driveways, seventy eight miles of sidewalk, a little over five and a half miles of paved paths. There are two intersections that are signalized that are fall under the city's responsibility for accessible pedestrian signals. And there are four push buttons of flashing beacons. And so this plan looks at the, we have the total inventory, which the plan documents, but then we also look at where the barriers. So about fifty eight percent of curb ramps and eighty three percent of driveways are noncompliant. With sidewalks, we have about a third of the mileage we've identified as noncompliant. And less than ten percent of the mileage of paved paths is noncompliant. Both of those city intersections have noncompliant pedestrian crossings. But you have no barriers at the rapid flashing beacon crossings. Those are compliant. So now that we know the barriers, we have to decide how to prioritize which barriers to address before others. The key factors in forming that prioritization are shown. First is responding to ADA grievances. That's a matter of, you want to um, respond to those first. Uh, given liability and other, um, you know, respond to the legal items for sure first. Uh, the next item we have is six year transportation improvement pram, program projects. Uh, I've worked with the city staff to look through the planned projects on the city's TIP to really see where is barrier removal, where is there potential for barrier removal? And to have the city staff be thinking, how do we make sure ADA barrier removal is built into these projects? The city also does their annual sidewalk assessment. We use data from it to inform this plan. But it's another way the city can see where there are bigger sidewalk issues in some places than others. The sidewalk program is also a way for the residents of the city to uh, be involved with improving the infrastructure. And then we really encourage public feedback through the citizen action requests as a, as a first step. We'd love to, we're working with the city team, the city would love to uh, kind of go through an action request before it comes to the level of a grievance, uh, is, is the goal. This large table, the big story of it is that in a barrier removal plan, we gave the city cost estimates. And we document how we got to those amounts for each of the facility types. The barrier removal cost estimate, if you look at the total figure of ninety five million, that can be a scary figure. Uh, however, this is actually um, quite typical of ADA transition plans that they have these high numbers. Especially when you look at sidewalks and driveways, as they are just more expensive types of infrastructure to replace and fix. But I want to emphasize the ways in which the city has barrier removal planned through upcoming projects. For the next six year period, seventy curb ramps, eighteen driveways, a little over a mile of sidewalk. And two signalized inter, intersections, these are the uh, planned barrier removal projects through planned TIP projects, how we can make progress on barrier removal. So we do have more work to do twenty thirty one onward, but the ADA requires agencies make progress. And so this shows how the city can make progress. Now, there's one other category that I've added into this plan, because I want to give the city credit for where they are improving accessibility for city residents. And that is through new ADA infrastructure. So it's not considered barrier removal, because it's a place where no facility currently exists. But you are expanding the overall network of facilities that persons with disabilities can access. So in addition to all that barrier removal on the previous slide, we have sixty seven curb ramps, twenty five driveways, a bit of sidewalk, two future rep, flashing beacon crossings, and some other improvements to crosswalks that are coming through new, through city projects and a potential private development. So I want to give that city credit and let the public know where other uh, accessibility improvements are being made. I've done about ten of these ADA transition plans for various Western Washington clients. And I really encourage every single one of them to do annual progress reports. Even if it's a one page bullet point list of here's how many curb ramps we did, here's how much uh, sidewalk barrier removed. Um, I think it's a really great tool to keep the public informed of the progress that's being made. And it also makes your five year plan update that much easier if you have those annual reports to compile. And importantly, this plan included public engagement opportunities throughout the process. We first started out with a project webpage and we promoted that through various channels, including direct emails to stakeholders within the city that the city team and I researched ahead of time. We also had a online survey that had a map component, so that people could even add a specific location and add photos to where they experienced barriers, which respondents did use those tools. We got ten responses during that month long survey. We also had an in-person ADA workshop at the pavilion. And we also had a hybrid version. There weren't any virtual attendees. Uh, but that June workshop included five members of the public, uh, plus project team members and a few people that I believe are sitting in that, this room tonight as well. And then right now, today is the last day for public comment on the draft plan. We made it available at the end of October for two weeks. And as of this evening, I can update that we now have four responses to date um, from the public. Uh, we'll incorporate those responses into the final plan. And those comments dealt with ADA items, but also non-ADA specific items. Um, and one of the great recommendations by someone was for the ADA grievance procedure to kind of call out that people may have challenges with digital accessibility. So that's one thing I think we could improve in the final plan is to more specifically state um, how the grievance can be related to digital as well as physical access. So we have the project website. We have a QR code available for you. The link's provided. Uh, the uh, hope is that we can get, answer any questions or comments you have. And also receive a recommendation um, to adopt it in December. Thank you.
Thank you. Really extensive. There's a lot there. All right, um, next we have a US twelve highway rail separation, that project, if that would be presented by Nick Bird.
All righty, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm sure the screen here, we'll see how that looks up on the big TVs here. Isn't there? Look at that. We were able to make it work. Uh, so thank you uh, for setting some time aside tonight to go with the Highway twelve rail separation project. It's been, I don't know, uh, I think ten months since we last uh, presented to council. Uh, January was, I think, the last time we were up here. And Deborah, one of our project team, or project managers, uh, provided the presentation on alternative six C at that point in time. Uh, obviously, it is now ten months later and some things have changed. And so we wanted to kind of walk you through kind of the, the history and where we're at right now, uh, prior to uh, asking council to take action tonight. So uh, we're gonna, we're gonna fly through, you know, what the project is, you know, for, for anybody that, that may not be aware of the project. And then um, the various different stages of the project. I want to kind of walk, walk people through, take, take everybody along the journey that we've gone on. Well, we're gonna do it in a very condensed timeline, uh, as uh, Debbie here indicated. Uh, I think just in the last uh, two years, two and a half, three years, we have looked at seven different alternatives. We're gonna run through those. We're gonna, we're gonna crash them down here in the, into ten minutes, into fifteen minutes. So. Uh, real quick, uh, the big, big picture uh, standpoint is, I think everybody's aware that there are trains that go through Aberdeen. Uh, they uh, in East Aberdeen, uh, they do impact the uh, the commercial establishments, uh, they're on the south side of the rail tracks, or the railroad tracks. And they also uh, translates to impact, impacts on Highway twelve, uh, with cars that uh, tend to queue up waiting to turn uh, right or left into that commercial area. So one of the things that I think is an important piece to note is uh, you know, right now, there's a significant expansion that is currently underway. And uh, we have a couple of members from the work for East Harbor here that, you know, after I get through the presentation, we'll see if there's anything else that they would like to add. But right now, uh, there's roughly thirty five thousand cars per year or so that they come into the port. Uh, and then those same cars also do go out. Uh, so that translates to roughly seventy thousand cars per year that go through this, this uh, commercial area. After the T four expansion and or other business lines of businesses that appeared earlier at the port, uh, that number's going to increase to seventy five thousand per, per year inbound and then another seventy five thousand outbound. So we're gonna go from roughly seventy five thousand cars per year to a hundred and fifty thousand cars per year, real quick. Um, and so part of why we've really been actively trying to close the gap on this is we know that that's an impending um, element, something that it has to be addressed. Uh, there are congestion elements that, that um, you know, currently impact the area. And unfortunately, with more rail cars and more, you know, crossing impacts, that's, that's not gonna get any better. And so the objective is to facilitate this project and advance forward. This project actually started in two thousand thirteen. Um, Deborah might say this is it hurt their child, is that a fair statement? So Deborah Simon, our, our project manager, has been on this project since day one in two thousand thirteen. In two thousand thirteen, you know, the, the project team provided ten different alternatives, uh, or concepts. And narrowed those down to the top three concepts. Went through a, a pretty robust uh, alternatives analysis and, you know, community engagement plan. And settled on uh, what was then called alternative C, which is the shaleless street over crossing, which is shown in the, in the image here. That has been kind of the, the nexus of the design uh, since two thousand fifteen. In two thousand eighteen, uh, a planning phase was, was undertaken to kind of refine this and, and put a little bit more polish on it and, and get it ready for advancing into the primary design. And in two thousand eighteen, we added, you know, the, the eastbound auxiliary ramp, uh, to minimize impacts to the, uh, both roundabouts. Uh, put together a concept level uh, cost estimate for both construction and right of way impacts. Uh, again, facilitated more outreach and, you know, distilled that down into a project framework. That, I, I think um, was a, a, a simple milestone, we'll call it. Um, because at that point in time, we started to advance the project in kind of little bite sized pieces as we uh, were kind of waiting for funding. At that point in time, in, in twenty twenty one, we applied for a raise grant. Uh, actually secured the raise grants. We had federal money tied to the project. But shortly after that, in, in twenty twenty three, uh, the Washington State Legislature fully funded the project. And at that point in time, I had to make one of the hardest decisions that I've made in my career and uh, go to Senator Campbell's office and, and say, we can't use this right now. We didn't want to federalize the project, because that would increase the project schedule. Right now, uh, with the project schedule that you can see on the board, you can see that we believe we're at the end of preliminary design. One of the key components of uh, finalizing this preliminary design is locking into place this geometric framework. And we're gonna walk through that here in a few minutes. Uh, we've already framed out, you know, our right of way impacts. Um, and there are a number of other milestones that we have hit along the way that, that we'll walk through here in a, in a few minutes. One of the most important things that I think is, is necessary out of this is that you can see, assuming we identify that, that preferred, you know, uh, geometric layout uh, today. Our target is that by the end of twenty twenty six, the fourth quarter of twenty twenty six, we are gonna be ad ready to, to be moving this project uh, and start breaking ground shortly thereafter. So again, chewing through the preliminary design framework, your art, our target focus was, we know we had seven rail crossings. And, and we, we, because of the, the funding program that we were in, we were looking at eliminating at least one rail crossing. Uh, and obviously, you know, facilitating that alternative C that was confirmed in, in two thousand uh, seven, or two thousand fifteen. So the preliminary design, you know, really has, you know, three key constraints. And, and we've got alternative six one that you guys previously saw shown here in the, in the graphic. But we have three components that are, are critical for us to kind of chew through. And like I said, I, I feel like we're there. So the first one was the approval of the Department of Transportation, US twelve is a state highway. We have to go through the process and get their blessing as we go through the design activities. We can't advance the construction without the blessing. Um, well. We can't advance the construction without the blessing. Um, I'll show you in a minute here that that process has, has been completed. The second is uh we have rail design uh constraints. So there's a, a vertical clearance that we have to be mindful of, of as we, we deal with the railroad crossing. And so we have to make sure that we are 23 feet from top of rail to the bottom of the girder. So we have 23 feet in between uh those two areas. And so that's a, that's a non-negotiable. That must happen. Um, and then the last piece is the overcrossing uh touchdown impacts. And so if you recall back in January, we had talked, hey, you know, when we move this, you know, there's impacts and, and yeah, every single time we moved something, there was pros and cons associated with it. But right now, I guess, kind of chewing through those, those, you know, critical design uh constraints. So the, the first item is, is Washdaw approval. Uh, so there's two key components that we go through. They have the intersection control evaluation and then they have the plan for approval. Intersection control evaluation was approved in August of 24. Uh, so sixteen, eighteen months ago. Um, the plan for approval was recently approved in, in August. So right now, um, all of our planned mainline work has been blessed by Washdaw. Um, and that, that is, is pretty much locked in at this point. The rail constraints, this is a, a figure kind of describing, describing uh what I was just describing with that vertical separation. Uh, this is again, you know, showing the previous, previous layout. Again, one of the key components is, is that if you're trying to make sure that we get over something, the, and have that height uh requirement, that impacts our ability to control the ramp slope. And so the shorter that runout, the steeper that slope needs to be. So we had to get a little creative, um, which we'll, we'll talk about in a few minutes. The last piece is, you know, the, the onsite uh constraints and, and how we're dealing with those. There's a number of different um, you know, vehicles that we have to make sure can traverse this area. Uh, we know we've got urban trucks that go through there. There is a transit stop that is in there. There are parks that, that park all over in there. And um, what we call uh WB67, so sort of the big semi trucks, those go to all of the stores there at Olympic Landing. Uh, somewhere between 24 to 32 go to Walmart a day. Um, so we have to make sure that, that those um, you know, pieces of equipment can get through. So as we look at, at the various different um layouts, um, and again, I apologize. Uh, I forgot we had the little TVs up here. Uh, so these are really, really, really hard to see if you're not, you know, standing right next to them. For council members, uh, I'd print them out. They're even harder to see because they're literally two inches uh piece of paper. So the first item on the left is the original concept, which was presented in, in 2021 in that um, uh, planning document. In 2023, when things started to get really serious, after uh funding was received, we started to really ramp things up. Uh, we actually added a, a second southbound lane to address queuing on the, the, the bridge. We recognized though that that queuing is still the address for the, the uh, we'll say initial design concerns about traffic queuing up adjacent to commercial facilities. So we added a, a roundabout here in the, in the third alternative at that touchdown location. And again, that's, that's all mighty dandy. Um, and we'll go through the process constantly real quick. The fourth option, uh, we ended up kind of shifting things around. We moved the overcrossing west uh and facilitated a, a fullway stop. Again, traffic queuing uh didn't behave the way that we wanted it to. So the fifth option, we ended up throwing in uh actually a, a flipped option and, you know, brought the overcrossing down from the north side. Unfortunately, that, that ramp slope was really steep. Uh, it was, I think, one of the steeper options that, that we had looked at. Um, in alternative 6.1, which we brought to council actually back in January, we were able to get that ramp slope down to 9.6%, um, but still, you know, roundabout had, you know, some um non-uniform parking configurations and, you know, some undesirable elements that, that not everybody was, was excited about, you know, jumping, jumping on that alternative. We uh continued moving that forward uh in April of this year, kind of shifting the roundabout further east and looking at a couple of different options there. But at that point in time, we couldn't facilitate movements of the sign being this onsite. So that um caused a eighth iteration, which was, you know, finalized in August of this year, um, which again shifted the, the roundabout further to the northeast, uh, which does have a, a much better onsite layout, uh, geometric layout, facilitates traffic where it needs to be um. What? So we'll, we'll get to some of those details here in a second. Um, I'm trying to fly through this. I recognize there's a lot of information here. We're about halfway through, but the, the good stuff's coming here in a second. So again, as I indicated, the original concept uh did create some, some impacts as it related to, to truck ingress, egress and steep slopes. And so as we moved on from that, um, we addressed the traffic queues as I previously indicated, but um the steep slope was still an area of concern. The third alternative uh that we had considered, again, further addressed the traffic queues, you know, and, and uh mitigates those impacts, but still didn't hit the nail on the head because of the steep slope. The fourth option, uh, we actually kind of shifted the, the um the intersection a little bit away from the store, kind of outlined, or lined it up with the auto ring road and kind of brought the overcrossing in from the west. Again, that was a creative solution, uh, but it created significant challenges as it relates to truck access in and out of the facility. Again, you know, we, our target when, when we're dealing with high-speed overpasses was, we want to be looking at, at an eight percent slope. That's, that's the general target. Um. The highest overcrossing ramp that we had had, um, from a slope standpoint was this alternative, alternative five with a 12% slope. It's not impassable, uh, but it is a challenge for those larger uh semi trucks. So that, again, necessitated us to continue kind of looking at, at further solutions. Again, you know, we had talked about this alternative six one back in January. Uh, we felt pretty comfortable with this, but like I said, not everyone was on board with the 9.6% slope that we were looking at. We had come up with another scenario to, to hit that eight percent magic number. But that resulted in about a five-foot, four-foot, five-foot fill uh to the roundabout area on top of the fill that we were already planning. Uh, so it was going to translate to a pretty significant uh runout. Um, it impacted a large portion of um both the Walmart and the Olympic Landing properties uh from a construction standpoint as well as a, a, a profile standpoint or a side profile standpoint. The next two options that we had um kind of run through uh in early 2025 was um again, shifting the ramp further east. Uh, and, and in both cases, we just, we didn't feel like it was the right layout. And so that necessitated us coming up with this eighth alternative in August of this year. Basically, we, we um moved or shifted, shifted this roundabout northeast. Uh, this framework eliminates the queues adjacent to, you know, commercial facilities, which is, I, I think, one of the big concerns that the people had had. Um, one of the most important pieces associated with this is really improved our construction sequencing, meaning we're able to do a lot of the work offline. And now, as I noted in the cons, it, it does impact uh a couple of the commercial buildings in that area. Um, but the, the trade-off there is, is that there is opportunities for us to facilitate construction offline and not impact the other remaining businesses. As I indicated, the ramp slope is, is an eight percent maximum on both sides. Um, we are actually improving the rail safety component because we are now eliminating two crossings. Every other alternative, a private naples, eliminating only one crossing. The thing that I, I, I'm really impressed with the design team about is the net combined parking and access, less than 10 stalls. Uh, the net, after the project's all said and done, the net impact of stalls is, is less than 10 uh on both properties. And I think there's, I want to say close to 900 stalls between the two. Um. Kind of real slow estimation. We'll go with it. Um. One of the other items that I'd identified is uh, you know, keeping the parking fields contiguous. Um, in a previous alternative, let's look at this one, for example, we have a, a, you know, parking field that is uh kind of an island, for lack of better words. Um, and so it required people to cross areas of, of the normal public travel way. And now, in, in this case, for the most part, um, almost all of the parking fields remain contiguous. Then the last piece is that we have unobstructed, like unobstructed 24/7 access to, you know, Jerry Queen McDonald's, Walmart, Olympic Landing, all of the commercial properties in that area, with the exception of, of uh tractor supply, which is to private property on the other side. Um, but the remainder of, of the commercial properties on the south side now have 24/7 uh unrestricted impacts uh because they are able to use the overpass to facilitate crossing in the event of a blockage. So here's a, a high-level graphic that identifies, you know, kind of the key components. Um, the only significant change uh from alternative six to alternative eight as it relates to right-of-way impacts, as I indicated, is, is the, you know, two blue buildings on the eastern side of the figure uh which I believe are each no blocks, subway, habitat, etc. Uh, but this layout, I guess that does, does translate to other, you know, significant benefits. The remainder of the, the, you know, buildings that are planned to be impacted, structures that are planned to be impacted, there's no other changes uh that, that occurred. So key, key points associated with alternative eight, um, one of the things that I think was brought up during one of the uh design meetings was, you know, if, if you take property boundaries away and you say you're gonna provide access to this area, how do you do that? And so I think the initial response was, well, you want the touchdown at the middle. You don't want to put landing on one side and have everybody drive through the parking field to get to the other side. You land in the middle and let people disperse where they need to go. And so that was one of the, the, you know, key components to, to modifying this layout to, to where this, this is. So it generates that, you know, equitable benefit to all of the property owners. Really, other key components that I think are, are, is very important is, you know, that the eight percent design slope, uh, maximum design slope. Uh, there's not a, there's not a standard out there that we can fight that says eight percent is, is a bad place for this. So um eight percent max is, is the standard for when you're coming off of a 16 mile an hour highway. Um, and we're talking about using eight percent max on a very low speed and road. Uh, very comfortable with this design layout at this point in time. Like I said, the other, the other key component uh as it relates to um the rail crossing um project is mitigating that second rail crossing and eliminate. So here's a few graphics that the project team has put together. We tried to grab the, the shots that were very similar to previous shots that you'd seen. So here's one looking to the east. One looking from the west. Again, they're not vastly different than what you had previously seen, other than uh as we approached the touchdown location, it tails off to the east as opposed to going straight down uh adjacent to uh to Walmart. And then here's, here's one looking southwest that really kind of focuses on, you know, the, the compact roundabout and the traffic patterns in that general area. The right-of-way impacts um are, say, pretty numerous. Uh, there's a lot of right-of-way impacts associated with this project. Um, many of these have been previously identified. Uh, like I said, there, there are two new impacts that are associated with this alternative uh that can translate to uh relocations. And just about, just about to the end, uh, we talk about funding. Uh, again, I, I indicated that the project is um fully funded through the state of Washington connecting Washington Program. They, you know, the state legislature actually broke that up over three different biennium uh with this most recent biennium offering up 38 million. So that gives us the opportunity to advance to construction uh before uh July of '27, uh, which is a, a great place for us to be. We had done lots of, of public outreach uh approaching. The presentation in January, actually, we had launched the website back in, in 2024. Our game plan is, you know, pending the approval tonight, uh, we want to update the, the um, the geometric layout and the figures and the information of the website hopefully tomorrow. The team already has things prepared and so it's just a matter of uh, you know, getting the confirmation and moving that forward. So the next steps, um, and, and I think there's a couple of things that are, that are important to identify here. Um, obviously, we want to confirm ultimately as that basis of design tonight. Um, the second item shown on this uh design milestone checklist is the Washdaw approval for the mainline improvements. That's already been achieved. Uh, and then we need to chew through the plan specifications and, and cost estimate for the, the final layout. The environmental documentation, because it is not federally funded, is relatively straightforward on, on our end. Uh, so we'll be able to fly through that uh rather quickly. The right-of-way activities, we have initiated right-of-way um or, or offer packages to remember properties are ready. Uh, so we had, had already obligated the right-of-way lending from the state uh I don't know, six months or so ago. So we do have offers out, but part of what we felt was necessary is we want to confirm the basis of design so that we can get the offers running rolling to the uh, to the commercial property owners on the south side of the river. So that's, I think, the um, the nuts and bolts of what we've got going on, where we're at, and we'll hopefully go. For any questions, you know, if Taylor or Leonard consider anything that you guys wanted to write feedback on.
Good evening. You're the lab director of government for the affairs of Fort Gary's suburbs. Um, the figures, the, the estimates I should say, that Nick shared with you regarding the increase in rail are accurate. I don't know where you've gone, but they're, they're pretty accurate. So it's happening. This is coming. Um, the expansion is knock on wood, Leonard, maybe a little ahead of schedule even. So we um expect the first vessel to be at the dock on April 1st and will, sorry, start working through um the announcement of a new facility. So by this time next year, you can expect to see the, the rail traffic essentially doubled. So um, we are very um thankful for all the work the city and um everyone has done on this project. And we uh, we just asked that you support it and uh we can make sure we're, we're getting this done for the future. And happy to answer any questions on the, on the ports side. Thank you.
So one, one thing that I, I think is important to note um is that when we, when we look at this figure, um, I, I had indicated that there were two crossings that were closing. And so right now, the we have two crossings that are currently used, Newell, which is kind of, that's the one next to the gas station. That's eh, not a lot of people use that. The Shealess Street Crossing is one that a lot of people use. That is, that is a crossing, that's the one that everybody turns left at in, in front of Walmart. So that's the other crossing that goes. Um, so Deborah had mentioned that that's, I don't know if I had made that clear enough. I want to make sure that everybody understood that that was the game plan. Now, that does add some, some interesting dynamics in how we're going to facilitate construction to make that happen. Uh, but that's part of the sequencing that the project team is, is learning through. But I, we're happy to answer any questions if you guys have any.
I think I have two.
Okay.
First, an amazing job getting this figured out with such a limited space, absolutely a puzzle. Um, it looks like this design is only for vehicles. Um, what provisions are there for pedestrians to get across?
So bike and pedestrians are actually intended to uh be on the overcrossing. Uh, so there's a couple of different components that I think are, are necessary for us to point out. So uh on the cross section that's in the top right, uh, you can see, you know, bikes are intended to use, uh, let's see.
Yeah.
So there will be bike lanes on both sides of the overcrossing. And then there will be sidewalk on one side. And that was to minimize the width of that overcrossing structure, to minimize impact. So that's why we have a wider pedestrian path on only one side. We're able to save a little bit of space and cost.
And then the other question is, have you worked out traffic flow to see where, how many cars coming into town are going through the area? Will it take to create a boondoggle, given cars going over that overpass potentially could be backed up?
So we did pretty extensive traffic analysis. And actually, Transportation Solutions, who you've heard from others, we have made enough. They are a subconsultant on this team and have analyzed not only the roundabout on US 12 with the new overcrossing, but also the onsite private traffic flow once you touch down into the commercial area. So we've looked out 40 years. So we've generated the traffic model based on existing conditions, extrapolated that out 40 years. We've run a train that blocks all of those at-grade intersections for 60 minutes, and that's the traffic model that we have run. And the commercial onsite operations are all operated in a level of service A. So A through F, F is bad, just like in school. So level of service A for the onsite operations. And then also the US 12 roundabout is also functioning in acceptable level of service. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So I'm not very good at maps. My husband will tell you that. So we're going to land now in that parking lot. Kind of where the eye clinic is now, is that, give me a general idea now?
Or Terrier Clinic.
Or Happy Terrier is where they'll land?
Right.
Okay. So it's going to affect those, no more Happy Terrier, no more Hutton?
Just Hutton.
Have to move. Got to find a placey for it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So one of the items, if you look in the kind of center of the I, is you've come along the roundabout and up and over the overcrossing. The Mike's Meats facility and the Mattress Ranch building, those do remain intact, and they do become somewhat of an island. And our design team has been working really hard to show that we can maintain access both for customers and truck delivery to those two parcels, to get in, to get out safely. So that's another piece of the puzzle, Liz, that you talk about. Like, this really is, we're between a rock and a hard place and a river and a hill. And it's, it's very challenging. I think if this had been an easy solution, it would have been completed 30 years ago. So we know that there will be impacts, and we know that there are businesses that are being relocated. But for the long-term success of Highway 12 in this community, then that is what we were looking for in this Alternative Eight solution. It, it will be the long-term solution. David?
I, I follow this project very closely, and I'm really impressed with what I see with the landing spot. It really does what we hoped for, and it looks really good. I have one question, but two, the, the removal of the, the crossings?
Yeah, there's, there's two active crossings. So we see the two red Xs on this exhibit, the one at Newell, next to the gas station, and Shahela, the south leg of Shahela Street.
Just like, as being certain that here's the train lines a lot, will that be more, you're like a less duration of train walking like this? Cost maybe like 10 seconds less, maybe? But would that, will it impact the amount, the length of duration? Do we get it sometimes for several minutes later in the night from, like, from Tractor Supply?
It probably won't reduce the longevity, because as you, as they keep going towards the railroad tunnel, there's still going to be an opening crossing there, the eastbound traffic. Yeah. And the reason why we ended up removing the Shahela Street Crossing is it, it conflicted with the construction of the overcrossing, and we also didn't want it to be one more opportunity where cars will sit and wait on the highway for trains. So some of this is also about facilitating the most efficient operation on Highway 12. And there's also going to be a structure here in the center of Highway 12, in that, where that bridge is, because we couldn't go a complete span all the way across the highway and the railroad. It would have been too deep of a bridge border, which made a steeper, you would have had to pick up the overcrossing surface, which made a steeper ramp slope than the 8%. So having that bridge here in the center of Highway 12 will still protect that bridge here with barrier so the cars don't damage it. But that blocks the, the access to Shahela Street and West, the left turns.
Just out of curiosity, how deep do those pile lanes have to go?
I've got at least 100 feet.
Yeah, I think we, for example, on, on the Bright Creek Pump Station, we've been down to about 120 feet. And so I would expect, you know, when we're talking about structures like this, you know, 120 is not realistic. Depends on what we hit. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. So right now, we're going to move on to requests for council action. Is there any report from, from Chair?
Okay. We're requesting the City Council authorize the surplus of the city's shore telephones. These are the old landlines sitting, and I make them truly surplus.
That's good.
Is there a discussion on this? That council person has.
Should they be donated to the museum?
My second half.
All in favor?
Aye.
And under ordinance, we have first reading, requesting City Council to adopt the AWC, A and O tax model ordinance Bill Number 25 dash 13. This is just to bring us up to state law.
Is there any discussion on this, Sam? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? The doctor.
And again, first reading, requesting the City Council to adjust the current low-income senior rate income threshold from 300% of the property guideline to 200% of the property guideline, Bill Number 25 dash 16. Make a motion, needs of this. It's been over since I've heard of the discussion on this, Sam.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Put motion to the doctor.
Third reading, requesting the City Council approve the third reading and final passage of the ordinance on the 2025 supplemental budget ordinance, Bill Number 25 dash 10. I make a motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this, Sam? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
Requesting the City Council approve the third reading and final passage of the 2026 preliminary budget, Bill Number 25 dash 12. Make a motion, you accept this?
All with, this can't run.
This can't run. Oh. Request the City Council, and in a correction, I'm requesting the City Council approve the third reading and final passage of the ordinance of the 2025 property tax levy reflection in 2026, Bill Number 25 dash 11. I make a motion and passes.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this, Sam? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
Requesting City Council approve the third reading and final passage of the 2026 preliminary budget, Bill Number 25 dash. You accept this?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? We're now. Over in the public safety with that chairperson.
We have no reports coming.
Thank you. And public works with Chairperson Francie.
Yeah, first, just general reminder that the ADA barrier removal heading document is up for review still, and you have probably under the date. Submit something, plug to that. Then I'll go on to our actions. First one is requesting the City Council approve to execute the similar CCTV inspection contract vector services, LLC, giving amount of $1,200,000. I mean, if we accept this.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion stopped.
Okay, our next item is requesting the City Council authorize the mayor to execute the agreements with GTH for state and federal governmental affairs services for the contract cycle of 2026, 2027. To continue partnering with the City of Hopecrim for ordering the joint legislative plan for the Aberdeen-Hopecrim flood protection project and the US 12 highway rail separation project. I mean, if we accept this.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this, Sam? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? The doctor.
Okay, our next item is requesting the City Council authorize the execution of the supplemental agreement with H, uh, RH2 Engineering Incorporated with an amount of I mean, if we accept this report?
Second.
A million?
34,000.
34,000?
It's been moved in separately. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion is adopted.
Okay, and our last item is requesting the City Council approve the Alternative Eight configuration for the US 12 highway rail separation project as the final design and property acquisition. I mean, if we accept this report?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this now? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Noted. Thank you. Now we'll go to special agenda items with council president's word.
I have a request for the City Council to approve, requesting City Council approval to adopt statute RCW 46 dot 61 dot 570, a very important table and code entry with the administration of the courts, since it's Bill Number 25 dot 14, and we accept the report. Second.
Is there any discussion on this report? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Thank you.
Next, we have the second reading, requesting the City Council approve to adopt statute RCW. This is the same thing. There's a public hearing?
There's first public hearing.
I move we open a public hearing regarding the adoption of statute RCW 46 dot 61 dot 570 regarding parking table code entry with the administration of the courts.
Second.
If we can second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? We're now in public hearing. Does anybody like to comment on this? I'll accept a motion to close public hearing.
I think so.
Moving second, is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Public hearing is now posed.
And next, we have an appointment for the Honorable Susan Solan, who will draw your term beginning on January 1st, 2026, and then preventing, um, that new December 31st, 2030. I mean, we accept this appointment.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? And then all in favor?
Aye.
And last thing, we have the first reading of the revised voluntary separation incentive program, ordinance number 6722, Bill Number 25 dash 15, and we read off this reading.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? All right, now we'll move to public comments. So is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a public comment?
I'm April Obay Birdmore. I wanted to say that I was hoping next year, we can do something a little bit more for our town, for the vets. I am an Army brat. My dad was in the Army. Aunts and uncles, cousins, have you, nieces, Army. My son is in the Army, is in the Army. A lot of people around here have to go out of town, do some kind of celebration. We have a log pavilion, you know, recognize people that, you know, that are up in their age and listen to their story. Just a thought. And another thing is, Ruth, I haven't contacted you yet, because I've been talking to people about what the steps need to do to recognize envisioners. So I have not ignored you. I just, I'm getting all the information. Also, if anybody was stuck in the traffic today because of the accident right there at the bridge, something needs to be done in that area. I happened to be in my truck with a load going to the dump and behind a log truck. So we had to go left at docking box, go around, go around the roundabout, go around the roundabout, and then go back around, and then go around, and then go in there. So it took like, what, 30 minutes to get across the bridge? So, and that's a really bad area, not only for pedestrians, but the accident today. Kudos to the fire, or the police stations. They have that organized. They have alleys cut off where people couldn't cut through, because there are a lot of people going in saying, so kudos to Acre Beaton. So, but that area needs to be, something needs to be done before a pedestrian or another worse accident happens. Thank you.
Here. Any other public comment? Started off with, it started off with, started with your name, your name and characters. Does that work? Your name and your word, please.
Okay, my name is Stephen Wood. I'm from Aberdeen, Washington. And what I wanted to say is, is this thing going on with this problem this afternoon, I was stuck in that tube, and I was trying to get across town. And I was on Harren Street, Broadway and Harren, and I got stuck there. And it took me 15 minutes to get to the end of the block, to turn left, go down a couple of blocks, go down the alley, come across, and I was going over to a restaurant over there and going to meet somebody. And I made it, but I was a little bit late. But, but we looked up the street to see what's going on. The cops had that blocked off, that, that one lane. So I don't know why, why they did that, but it had something to do with that wreck. So I would, I would think that the police was what was involved in that one, and it was shutting the place down. They didn't want anybody driving through there. And I think that's what, what it was, but I couldn't see too much. I could see down, a block down, and I'd see the car, car ahead. It parked all the way across the intersection there to stop people from going through there. And they didn't want them to, to come in there. So they, they had their reasons, but.
Probably an investigation or something.
Yeah. Another thing, besides that, is Uh, besides that is, uh, down here on, uh, Broadway and First Street. They put those little cones out for that, uh, curve. Well, I guess it has to do with safety for people walking across. They won't hit anybody without seeing, you know. They want to be aware of, you know, somebody's being there instead of hitting them first. But that I can see, but the problem is that road, First Street is so skinny. That, that you go around those cones, you're, you're giving it into the left turn, turn lane and go up the hill.
Uh, that way is where, where addressing that problem.
Yeah, okay. So that's a good idea because it, it, the way it is now, it's not. Any move those cones over some because it cuts off too much of the street. You know, because you got left lane, they gotta run straight through. So they're taking a point in the ring. And then you got these things way out there. Yeah. So other than that, uh. That's about all I have to say, you know, but I wanted to bring that to somebody's attention, you know, because especially over there by the bank, uh, Tiggerland Bank. They got a there too. And the problem with that one. Is, is if you want to park and, and go into the bank, you, you gotta go around those cones and back up. If they don't want to get too close to that high curve, it's a lot of eight inch curve and you mess up your tires if you hit it. So you gotta go forward and then back up. I mean, it's not a big deal, but the way it was before, we just broke right in there, you know? That stopped that, but I guess that's the way it's gonna be there. I haven't had any problem with hitting somebody or close to it. It's, it's never happened to me, but when I had a cross in the middle of the street. And I was also told on the radio that people that cross the street can be ticketed. Just like hitting somebody in your crosswalk. I didn't know that. That's all, I guess that's the law out there that I didn't know about. And, and I know now, so you, you've gotta be real careful. You gotta run the crossing. Either it's illegal cross, if you hit them, it's your fault. That's just very serious. Other than that, that's all I got.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Anybody else with a public comment?
Hello, my name is Joe Kane. I'm in Ward three. And I am here to say goodbye to Liz today and I, my husband's already in the car. Because it's lasting a lot longer than he thought. And so I didn't want, and, and God bless you, Liz. Thank you for being my councilwoman for so long. And all the help and wonderful things that you've done for our ward and we, we love you and appreciate you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Right, uh, is there anything for your council group president's award?
Yeah, given that we've been able to successfully pass the budget, um, and we can guarantee that we'll be able to swear any new terms by November. December tenth, I'm hoping with council entertaining emotions, you cancel the eleven twenty six meeting. The, uh, excuse me, the November twenty sixth meeting, the December twenty third meeting and the December thirty first meeting.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this now? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, so we canceled, uh, Thanksgiving Eve, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. All right, thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Councilperson Ellis.
Uh, mayor, mayor or may have permission?
Yes, you may.
It's hard. May I have your permission to speak from the podium?
Yes, you may.
Council members, mayor, administrator. My timeline has shortened and I will soon be moving from Aberdeen. And effective end of this meeting and retiring from city council. Much of my work life, I've been a city employee engaged in realigning. Uh, realizing policies that made infrastructure improvements for residents. I never saw myself as a city council member, but a vacancy came up and I knew my experience in city government would be beneficial. My insights have helped me, sir, to represent Ward three honestly. It has been a wonderful experience and I thank my constituents for putting their trust in me. And fellow council members, council presidents, board. I thank city staff, air board, city maintenance, radar, plumbing. For truly being available and responsive when our residents have concerns. We have worked together to tighten the city's budget utilizing citizen engagement. Hard budget cuts have been made and I hope one day the council is composed with fewer council members. Who will be effective while saving money. We tackled some difficult topics from weather to remove fluoride from city water, which we did. The canceling the gateway project and deciding how to best support our local museum. I've been involved in many large projects from updating the Aberdeen's comprehensive plan, U S twelve improvements. To the levee and the new bridge over the Wishcon along with sidewalks and street projects. I hope one day a sidewalk section is constructed on these streets to fill the gap between Stewart Street and Stewart Park. I won't be here to see that and help cut the ribbon. And, um, the other projects be constructed, but you've got this. And these projects in the city is in good hands. I've enjoyed calling Aberdeen my home and I wish you and the future council fall with us. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. I'll sort of give it to you.
Just like to say, good luck, Liz. Good luck and I hope you enjoy wherever you move to. I keep asking, is Liz going? No one knows. So good luck and, and good future for you.
And we'll miss you. Is it adjourned? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming to the meeting tonight.